Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, July 22, 2024. The time is 6:00 AM. We're here for the budget workshop of the municipal city council.
Yeah, but then I'm okay.
Thank you. We do have a call in person, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We do have one person that signed up to speak for our second citizens' appearance, Mr. Schoep. That is the second one, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we don't have anybody for the first one, so we'll skip over that till later. Item number three is the introduction of the general fund and debt service fund. Our rock star, Ms. Kim Tien.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
I'm referring to the video that you posted.
I keep hearing about this video, but yeah, me too. So I'm a little nervous about that. We love our CIO department. They did a great job. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to kick off the general fund and debt service fund budget workshops with you. But before I dive into the assessed valuations, the property tax rate, general fund, debt service fund budgets, I do want to share some key points with you and some considerations regarding the proposed fiscal year '25 budget. So the proposed budget is a balanced budget that maintains the city's infrastructure and existing, it enhances existing service levels. Maintaining the city's infrastructure and enhancing service levels are areas that staff understands are important to council. For example, the proposed budget does include a transfer to the infrastructure maintenance fund to fully fund the estimated cost to maintain our city facilities and the city's traffic system from fiscal years 2025 through 2028. The budget is also built around the assumptions that the rule 3.334 is in effect. It is based on a 3.499% increase in property tax revenue. It is also built around the strategic use of the general fund's fund balance, and it also keeps employees in the top third when compared to our survey cities. And then the last item is the proposed budgeted expenditures are 7.74% more than prior year, and that is after backing out the one-time transfers to the IMF fund to fund, again, those estimated costs of facilities and traffic projects. So now that you have an overview of some key points and considerations regarding the proposed fiscal year '25 budget, let's take a look at assessed values. This is on page four of your packet. And so this slide has the top portion of page four. It doesn't have the bottom portion of page four. The bottom portion of page four really shows you the breakout of where the growth is coming from. So it shows you any new construction, broke out by residential, commercial, and then business personal, personal property, and then it shows you reappraisals for each of those categories. This page has a lot of information. However, I want you to focus on the columns with the two red circles. The 2024 preliminary certified taxable value as of May 2022, shown in the first red circle, is about 12, almost $12.3 billion. And this is up about almost $1.8 billion, or it shows 1.766. This is a 16.81% increase from the prior year certified value. So in 2023, when we did this comparison, we were up 15.81% at this same time. Last year, we were up 14.29%. So 2023 was the first time since the mid-'90s that we saw double-digit growth in property. And back in the '90s, of course, we were growing, right? And so most of all of that increase was related to new construction. So based on the preliminary taxable values, commercial properties make up 48% of the total taxable value, and residential properties make up 52%. In May of the last two years, the allocation was 47% commercial and 53% residential. That's just a 1% difference, and I'm sure it's just how the appraisal districts are working the properties. So I would expect that when we end up, the split is going to be 45-55, just like it was in previous years, with 45% of the property values related to commercial and then 55% related to residential. So the last comment that I have on this slide is to remember that the taxable values of residential properties with homestead exemptions can only increase 10% and no more each year. And then also, there's some new legislation that is referred to as the circuit breaker, which limits to 20% the increase in the appraised value of non-residential real property that is valued at $5 million or less. So next, we're going to go on to estimated growth. And so this slide is not in your packet, and it takes the preliminary valuation growth rate that we received in May, which is the 16.81% rate that you just saw on the previous slide, and it predicts a growth rate based on a 30-year average adjustment between the preliminary value and what the certified values ended up being. This adjustment has always been a decrease, and this is because between May and July, the appraisal district is, they're both working on protests, right? And they're adding any abatements that are out there. So this analysis is really just to help us predict where values will end up so that we can predict a tax rate for you for this workshop. This analysis also, so it considers the highest and lowest adjustments that have occurred between the preliminary and certified values over the past 30 years. The analysis shows that if the 30-year adjustment is used, the growth rate would be 10.28%. And then if we use the highest decline between the preliminary values and the certified values, the growth rate would only be 3.22%. If we use the lowest decline, then the preliminary values, the difference between preliminary and certified values, the growth rate would be 14.25%. So just a lot of numbers out there, right? And it's all a bunch of guesswork, and we're using 7%. So why are we using 7%? Well, we decided to use 7% because if you think back, this is, all of the averages are built around 30-year average. The 10% cap on residential just occurred with SB2, so that was back in '21. And then the recent legislation on the 20% cap just occurred in the last legislation. So we just really are looking at what do we feel the rate is going to increase, and so we're using 7%. Another reason that we use 7% is if you recall the CSOL, as values come up, the tax rate comes down. If values go down, the tax rate goes up. So depending on where values come in, if the values come in at greater than 7%, the tax rate I'm getting ready to show you, if values are greater than 7%, then the actual tax rate will be less. If my 7% is high and values come in less, then the tax rate will be higher.
So, Kim.
Yes.
For the last number of years, you typically promoted an average tax rate, I believe, of 5% over two years, or 2.5% a year. That's kind of been our standard. So you're basically saying that we're at least three times off of that rate right now and potentially more?
Right. So what's interesting is from 2019 to 2021, the average growth rate was 4.8. So our 5% was really good, right?
Right.
And then the last 23, 24, and then this year, where, I mean, it was 10% one year, 9%, and so what is it going to be this year?
And it makes it very difficult to predict.
It does. Right. We were doing really good until these last three years, and then the market's all overboard. So I'm just.
Okay, thank you.
So then, if I could get you to turn to page five in your packet. Page five shows the estimated tax rate based on taxable values, growing at a 7% growth rate, and a 3.499% increase in the MNO property tax revenue. And that page also shows a breakout of the tax rate between maintenance and operations and INS. And then page six in your packet shows the same information, but for the revenue rate, which would generate the same revenue for the maintenance and operations property tax revenue, the tax rate as in the current year. The INS part will go wherever it needs to go, based on what principal and interest is needed, but the MNO would stay exactly the same.
Thank you, Mayor. Kim, for my clarification, so on page six, $52,212,42, was that the revenue that we budgeted to spend last year?
No. It is not. And the reason why is because it would be for the MNO rate, so that $44 million, that should be the same, roughly. And then what's different is the INS portion. So that $7.8 million for the property taxes, last year, it was only $7.3 million.
Okay.
Right? And that's because, as we discussed at the June retreat, we were going to maintain the property tax rate for INS to be able to fund the bond payments.
General fund, last year, we spent $44,320,000.
Yeah, and that does agree in the budget.
Just to be clear, you're talking about property tax revenue. The actual budget's larger than that.
Correct. Yes. Thank you.
So again, we have not received the certified tax values, so I cannot provide you with the official tax rate calculation. Those values, we should receive this Thursday, so we will lock ourselves in a room and calculate your tax rate and have that for you next Monday. So then, I know we're always curious as to what is the estimated impact on the city's portion of a residential property tax bill, based on the average home value for someone who has the own homestead exemption, as well as someone who has an over-65 exemption. And so this first slide shows the impact on a residential tax bill for a property with a homestead exemption only. And so it shows the fiscal year 2024 versus the proposed fiscal year '25. And so this is based on the fiscal year '24 assessed value, or taxable values, and it's based on the fiscal year '24 tax rate of .491818. And then for fiscal year '25, it is using the tax rate that is on page five of your packet of .478021, which is the 3.499% tax rate. So the average residential tax bill for a property with a homestead exemption, if property values were increased 7%, would be about $8 a month more, or $96 for the year. And then I'm going to take you to the next slide, and this shows the increase for someone who receives the over-65 exemption along with the homestead exemption. And you'll notice that the amount of taxes for somebody that meets both exemptions, they're paying less in property taxes, their tax bill is less, their tax bill would change about $9 per month, or about $110 for the year. Any questions on these?
Could you go back to the preceding slide just real quick?
Sure.
So why is someone with the extra exemption paying more per month?
Well, they're not paying more per month. Their increase is more, and that's because they both get the 5%. So 5% grows as value grows, right? 5% is higher on a higher value, but the $100,000 is just the $100,000.
Gotcha, okay.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So a flat value versus a percentage.
Okay, thank you.
Kim, so if we maintain $10.5 billion, I know it's going to be increasing about $1.7 billion in valuation for the property. If we keep $10.5 billion from last year, and we are increasing $5 million in additional expenditure this year, what would be the tax rate in total? Last year was .9, 49, right?
I'm not sure that I'm.
So last year's property valuation was $10.5 billion, correct?
$10.5 million, correct.
Billion?
Billion, thank you. Yes, with a D.
If we maintain that this year at that same rate, and we are increasing our expenses by $5 million extra this year, how much?
So if, let me make sure I understand your question. You're saying that if our property value.
Remains.
Remains at $10.5, then you, I can't tell you what that tax rate is without calculating it, but the tax rate would go up.
Right.
Right? Because if you, if your value, it's the CSOL, if your values stay down and don't go up, and you can raise your property tax 3.49, and that rate's going to go up.
So what are the additional $5 million expenditure this year?
So let me get to that. I'm going to cover revenues, and I'm going to cover expenses, and I think as I walk through the whole presentation, you'll get that answered, and if you don't, then we can come back to that. Okay?
I was just going to say, in the past, a million dollars is about a penny on the tax roll, though you can't directly relate that to your, it won't be 49 plus 5 cents, based on your question.
Right.
But basically, a penny equals about a million dollars.
Okay, so now we are going to, is it okay, move on to general fund revenues? So this, if you move to pages seven and eight of your packet, these pages provide you the list of sources of revenue for the general fund, and they show the amount being budgeted for each revenue source. And then I'm going to focus on page nine of your packet, because some of us like graphs better than the charts, so they're easier to read. So the top of page nine provides a 10-year history of total general fund. And what I kind of found interesting was that for fiscal year 2020, the year before Senate Bill Two went into effect, it was, you know, the budget was created even before we knew about COVID and SB2. Actual revenues actually totaled $73.3 million. The total proposed budgeted revenues for fiscal year '25 are almost $74.6 million. And so the proposed budgeted revenues for fiscal year '25 are only 1.7% more than the actual revenues five years ago. Just wanted to point that out. So then, at the bottom of page nine, that shows the pie chart that's going to be on this slide. This chart provides the total proposed revenues for each revenue category, along with each revenue sources' percentage of the total revenue of the general fund. Property taxes, which is the blue piece of the pie, are budgeted based on the 3.499% rate previously presented, and this revenue source represents almost 61% of total revenues, or about $45.5 million. Next is sales tax, and sales tax is represented by the red piece of the pie, and it's 21% of total revenues, or about $15.7 million. We do, again, continue to budget as if the rule 3.334 is in effect. And for fiscal year '25 proposed, we are budgeting a 5% increase over the adopted fiscal year '24 budget. Plus, there's an additional amount for a taxpayer that we initially thought was going to be impacted by the rule, but working with that taxpayer, and we now believe that that taxpayer will not be impacted by the rule. So property tax and sales tax together make up 82% of total revenues of the general fund, and the remaining 18% is from charges for services, court fines, licenses and permits, franchise fees, and the miscellaneous other revenues.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Kim, what's the explanation for the divergence on the interest income?
Okay. So for interest income, the 2023, you know, we were earning well over 5% in that year. And so really, about $6 million of that is actual interest income that's earned. The remaining, about 2.8 million, is from an accounting entry that we have to do at year-end. So we have to look at what does the market say our investments are worth at 930, and we have to recognize an unrealized gain or loss. So we had an unrealized gain. What happens is in fiscal year '24, we have to reverse it out, so we're starting with a negative book balance. And so what we've done is we have adjusted interest to, we were budgeting about $500,000. We've taken it up to $1.5 million, as you can see, for fiscal year '25. And so when we looked at what to budget for that, we're earning a little over 5% now, but we know that the Fed keeps talking about reducing rates, for one, and then we know that we are proposing to move $31 million out of the general fund to the infrastructure maintenance fund.
Okay.
So that.
So the balance is going to substantially decrease.
Correct.
Yeah.
Because our fund balance, we're moving it out to other funds to be strategic, right?
Do you think that 1.5 is still pretty conservative?
I think it is.
Yeah. Because I mean, yeah, okay.
I would never build a budget around interest.
No, no, no.
I would always want to be conservative when it comes to interest, because we just don't know.
There's just such a stark difference.
Right.
Question?
Thank you.
So when we are moving that money out of that fund, when you said we are still in effect of the tax rate with the 3.339 in effect, but we are moving fund to different buckets, we are not keeping it there?
Correct. So when I get to the general, when I get to the general fund walk forward, we can talk about that, because back, if you recall, when we had the June council retreat, we talked about the different buckets and what we were going to be using the general fund's fund balance for. So that'll be pointed out to you there, and you can see where we're moving that way from the general fund.
Kim, I'm going to ask maybe the same question, but slightly differently, because I maybe didn't hear Jim's question correctly, or I didn't interpret it the way. But on page seven, we're talking about sales tax. In '24, the total amount of sales tax was $23.4 million, and you're showing a proposed budget for this next year of $15.6. That difference of $8 million is roughly due to state law 3.334?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So let me see, where am I? So we're going to go back, okay, so we're going to, I'm going to refer you back to page eight in your packet again, because there's just one more thing I wanted to point out regarding revenues. So at the bottom of page eight, it shows that total revenues for fiscal year '25 proposed budget. At the bottom, it shows the $74,560,966 compared to the fiscal year '24 adopted revenues, which is in that second column of the $69,573,010. The difference in revenues between the two years is almost $5 million, right? Or a 7.2% increase. And so there's three revenue sources that are contributing to that increase. The first one is property taxes, which accounts for about $1.6 million, and that's simply increasing property tax revenue, the 3.499%. The second is sales tax, because we're increasing sales tax 5%, plus we've built in a little more than 5% for the business that I mentioned. So sales tax is increasing about $2.2 million. And then again, the final one that we've discussed is the interest income, which we've increased $1 million. So those three categories are really the reasons for your increase in revenue. Are there any questions on revenues? Okay, so next, I'm going to cover expenditures, and then we'll get to fund balance. Since I shared the percent increase in revenues from fiscal year 2020 to 2025 proposed budget, I was curious about that same information for expenditures. And in comparing the fiscal year 2020 adopted budgeted expenditures to the proposed fiscal year '25 budgeted expenditures, it's an increase of 3.6%, which I found really interesting, considering that's a five-year time period, and you think about what's happened in five years, right? The inflation was over 6% for a while alone. So you just think about that, and that our expenditures have only increased from 2020, pre-SB2, pre-COVID, pre-rule change, and all the inflation that we're only at 3.6% increase, I thought was pretty good. And I think that it also shows that the city continues to maintain its infrastructure and provide the level of service that our community expects. And I would also suggest that this is a good example of staff being good stewards of the city's resources and working together to plan, prioritize, and strategize the budget needs for each year.
So what's the explanation, or what falls within the title of combined services?
I'll get to that.
Okay. Thank you.
So what are the budget needs for fiscal year '25? Page 10 and 11 in your packet shows expenditures by division for fiscal year '23 actuals. It shows it for fiscal year '24 adopted, and it shows it for fiscal year '24 amended budgeted expenditures. And then the last column is fiscal year '25 proposed budgeted expenditures. Page 12 of your packet provides a graphical analysis of the general fund expenditures. And as you can see on this page, we have two ways to look at expenditures. We can look at them by function or by classification. The graph on the top of the page compares expenditures by function, and it compares fiscal year '24 adopted versus fiscal year '25 proposed. And then the graph at the bottom of the page provides a comparison of expenditures by classification for the same time periods. So both of the graphs in your packet show total expenditures, which include the one-time transfers. So if you recall, last year, we had the one-time transfers to the capital replacement fund and the enterprise solutions replacement fund. This year, we have the one-time transfer to the infrastructure maintenance fund. So the total expenditures for fiscal year '25 are $105,609,584 for fiscal year '25 proposed, and then for '24, that was $75,911,640 for the fiscal year adopted. But if we remove the one-time transfers to those other funds for both years, the total expenditures, where as you can see at the bottom of page 11, was 69, about 69.1 million for adopted '24, and it's 74, almost 74.5 million for fiscal year '25.
And this is the $5 million increase, correct?
Correct. And we'll talk about that. But I think the, looking at the graphs on page 12 in your packet, you can see that the inclusion of those one-time transfers skews our ability to really compare the operating expenditures between years. So the handout that I gave you this evening excludes those one-time transfers from the graphs shown in your packet, and it excludes them for both years. And so I'm going to go over the graph that I handed out to you, and that graph is going to match what's on the screen. So this first slide shows expenditures by function for fiscal year '24 adopted versus fiscal year '25 proposed, and the blue section represents public safety, and it is the largest section for both years. Public safety represents 40% in the fiscal year '24, and it now represents 43% in the fiscal year '25 proposed budget. This is a 15% increase for public safety, and the increase is related to salaries, a radio replacement, and then some legal services used by the police department. Going clockwise, the next section, the orange section, which is public works, and public works represents 14% of the pie for fiscal year '25 proposed, and it represented 17% for the fiscal year '24 adopted. This is a 7% decrease in public works. The decrease really is the net impact of an increase in salaries, and then the decrease in the annual transfer for traffic and facilities to the IMF. We're not making those annual transfers, since we're proposing to make that large transfer to cover the '25 through '28. So let me see, these two functions, we consider them our first responders. So let me see, these two functions, we consider them our first responders, public safety and public works. And so because they both provide for the safety and the infrastructure of our community. And so together, our first responders make up fifty seven percent of our total expenditures of the general fund for both fiscal year twenty four and fiscal year twenty five.
Remesh, Remesh had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Kim, back when you were talking about the public works for fiscal year twenty twenty five, you mentioned that the seven percent decrease was a factor of net of increase in salary and decrease of transfer. So from an operational standpoint, I thought we were not counting transfers.
So what I pulled out was the big transfer that we're making, the thirty one million. But the public works department, traffic and facilities, every year, there's an annual transfer that is included in the budget. It's about a hundred and ninety thousand for traffic, and then we also transfer about one point two million for facilities. And so we're not making that transfer since we're including that in the thirty one million. So that's going to show up, the thirty one million is going to show up in another area when I get to another piece of the pie.
Along with that, but we are, we do transfer every year into the IMF, right? Next year, there will be a transfer, correct?
No.
Well- There won't be?
Okay. So we do public works. Every year, we typically transfer a hundred and ninety thousand for traffic, about one point two to one point five for facilities, and then about, about one point six, almost one point seven for streets.
Okay.
The streets transfer is still in the budget. That annual transfer will still occur.
Okay.
But the other two, the transfer for traffic and the transfer facilities, we will not be making from twenty five to twenty eight because that's included in thirty one million.
So there's not an intent to replenish that fund over time? Is that the idea?
Correct.
So the transferage, in addition to the point two five sales tax that's coming to the IMF, right?
Correct.
Right.
You know, Kim, just a comment, because this, this page was supposed to be for us to understand net of the thirty one million transfer. But then in this orange slice, we are again saying that in twenty three, the transfer was there, but in twenty, sorry, twenty four adopted, the transfer was added, and in twenty five proposed, it's not there. So somehow, it's not apples-to-apples comparison for me.
So in twenty four, the annual transfer was there.
Uh huh.
Okay, for, I didn't pull it out of there because we, we actually made that transfer. The transfers that we pulled out were one-time transfers. The transfers that we're discussing right now are annual transfers. We always transfer to traffic, we always transfer to facilities, and we always transfer to, for streets.
I get that, but my comment is, it's not fair to compare these two metrics here because one includes transfer and one does not. Does that make sense to you?
You know, yes, and.
Because of how we're treating the thirty one million, it, there's another way. You could have said for next year of this year, depending on how you want to view it, you said a hundred and ninety thousand and how much was the second one?
One point two.
One point two. So say one point three million dollars of that thirty one million could have still been left in.
It could have, yes.
We're choosing not to because we're including it in the thirty one million and removing it over. So it's, it's, that's why I say yes. Twenty four has the automatic transfer in it. This one doesn't. But it's being picked up in another location and moved over.
So that's part of the sales tax we are moving, right?
Yeah.
So how do we say we have in effect three point three, operation-wise, we are moving money to run the operations? When you said we have three point three three four in effect, we are running the city with that in effect?
That is correct.
But we are moving money-
That, that is correct, but philosophically, we started doing that last year.
Right.
For the purposes of being able to use the excess tax for these one-time expenditures. The other way that you could look at that if you want to is, okay, don't do that. Put in the one point three million back over here, then we calculate the tax rate based on what it means to operate with the one point three over here. But you're still sitting with now, instead of moving thirty one, you've moved roughly thirty, twenty nine point seven. So it's, utilization of the funds for the purpose of what we've identified.
And actually, if I understood Peter's question correctly, I think he's bringing up a different point. The way I understood your question-
No, I understood the question. He says if we're saying we're operating under three point four nine nine, and we're operating under the sales tax rule, his, his statement is that we're not.
Right.
Because we are not spending the one point three million dollars here. If, if we were to put the one point three million dollars back over here into public works, it would then therefore be twelve point two million.
That's two point two.
Yeah, and I would say to you, we could do that. It'll just change some other calculations that we bring back to you on the twenty second. Then I would say to you, then what are you doing for the purposes of the money that we're setting aside for IMF is for those purposes?
Yeah.
So philosophically, if the council says, no, I want to operate under this particular environment, perfectly fine, council, this is what it's going to cost. And this is what the tax rate is necessary to support that. We're giving you the option of utilizing the funds for the purposes of which we set out, that we said we would do.
In my simplistic mind, what would have been clear is if you had an apples-to-apples comparison of, from a, from a plan to spend standpoint, this is what we did last year. This is what we planned to do this year. And then once we agree on that, we can decide how to fund that expense by moving from a different fund.
And I'm saying to you, I've just told you, that number goes to twelve point two. In order to support that, instead of a forty seven cent tax rate, it could be a forty eight, but tax rate. Right? But it can't, yeah. But it can't really because you're limited by SB two, which that means I'm going to be doing a reduction somewhere.
So I think the difficulty here, Remesh, is the apples-to-apples comparison that you want is actually on the previous page that Kim showed that doesn't accurately reflect-
Page eleven?
You can look at page twelve.
Twelve, it's page twelve.
Still shows that.
Page twelve reflects what you're asking for. That's with everything as is, but the, the thirty one million that we agreed to transfer to fund some one-time projects skews the data. So she's tried to pull that out to make it more of a actual comparison about what we're doing. Now, granted, in her, in the accounting world, they grouped some other one-time transfers into that thirty one million, which is what you were questioning. It, I mean, it's kind of-
So I was trying to get to where it's more operational, and as I said, the hundred and ninety thousand that we would do for traffic and the one point two that we would do for facilities, we considered, we were considering those operational. And yes, there are, we are doing, we are working some strategies. The same thing that we did with the capital replacement fund by fully funding that, right? That took it out of the general fund and put it over there, and that's paying for it for the next five years. We are replenishing it. There wasn't a decision made to replenish the IMF. The decision, and what we proposed as the strategy was to take the thirty one million and let's fund these things that need to be maintained for the facilities, the things that we've identified, right? And it's a strategy to get for the next five years while we figure them out.
So, okay, so it's, would you say traffic is one, the couple hundred thousand dollars?
Facilities.
Facilities, oh wait. Facilities, okay. What was the one point two?
Facilities is one point two, and then streets, and really, it's street sidewalks, alleyways, and eighty-eight items is about one point six, almost one point seven. And that's still in there.
What was the, wasn't there a two hundred thousand, a hundred and ninety or something?
Hundred and ninety was traffic.
Oh, okay. So traffic and facilities, those are ongoing. We'll fund, we fund those every year. There's-
Typically do.
Okay, so those, those will be ongoing. So it's the streets, that's the wild card here.
So, correct. But you still have the quarter cent sales tax that's in IMF for streets.
Yes.
So you still have that.
So, so we got, we've decided we got, well, it's not thirty one million, it's something, I guess, less than that. We've allocated out a general fund balance that we're going to use now for a bunch of projects over the next five years, right? That's what we've come up with. But after that, aren't, aren't we going to, what's the plan to fund, I guess, ongoing street and alleys and everything, I guess, beyond that?
So streets is still included in the budget. We didn't, the thirty one million does not include anything for streets, simply facilities and traffic system. We are still budgeting an annual transfer for streets, and it's a million, six hundred and fifty-six thousand in this proposed fiscal year twenty five. We're still budgeting that. We're still budgeting that, plus IMF, and that transfers to IMF, plus IMF receives the quarter cent sales tax for streets. So streets has a funding source, right? It's the other things.
So how much is the extra transfer from the general fund, I guess?
Thirty one million, one hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred.
Thirty one million, one nine-
Nine hundred, yeah.
Okay, but if I look at, if you look up in the combined services, there's only a twenty five million dollar change year over year.
Right.
So I guess that must be buried, things are buried somewhere else.
Right.
Part of that thirty one million must be somewhere.
Yeah, and we'll talk about that.
Okay.
I'll give you some explanations.
Okay.
I'll, I'll continue to go through, and then I think you might get that at least one.
Kim, back on slide eleven, sort of page eleven, where the bottom, you do the net of thirty one million, a hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred. I'm assuming a portion of that will get spent in next year, correct?
Yes.
So let's assume, divided by five and say it's six million. So technically, next year, we're spending six million plus the seventy four, four ninety seven, correct?
That would be almost eighty million, the way you just said that.
Yes.
We're spending seventy four.
Right. But of the thirty one million, there's a portion of that that we're going to be spending next year, correct?
I'm trying to understand the way that you're saying the question.
I guess because you're, we're spending it over five years. He's saying, what are we spending for next year, right?
Right. So, so next year-
Oh, for capital projects and every, I'm sorry, I have to think through what the next question is.
So IMF, they have, they have a list of projects. And so the projects that they're planning to do next year are, so they have fire station number three, they have some interior construction, that's about five point five million. They have three hundred thousand for some animal shelter work that needs to be done. There's something generator at the senior center, dehumidifier at the core, the justice center has an entrance, concrete replacement at their entrance. And then the normal, they had asked for the normal facilities transfer for fiscal year twenty five was one point three, and we went ahead and built that into the thirty one million.
So just, just for discussion, let's assume all of that adds up to six million or five million. My question is, is it the regular practice that we don't count that as money spent next year because it's part of IMF?
It's, it is counted as overall expenditure that, it's the big picture budget.
So, so my follow-up question, my guess, if that is six million, should we take a six million and add it to the seventy four, four ninety seven?
No, because it's not in the general fund. It's in a different bucket.
Okay, so we're now-
It's the bucket accounting that we've met with?
Got it, got it. So this is only for general fund?
Correct. That's all you're talking about tonight is general fund.
Sorry.
You had the special revenue fund.
While you hit that-
That's okay. You had the special revenue funds last Monday night. In that budget, there was the IMF and the discussion about the transfer of the thirty one million.
I'm still getting it, Remesh. It's all right.
That's okay. We had to figure out the questions first to make sure that we're answering the questions.
Okay. Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're on the green section now, which is culture and recreation. And culture and recreation represents eighteen percent of the total operating expenditures in the fiscal year twenty five proposed, and it represented nineteen percent in the adopted fiscal year twenty four budget. This is a four percent increase from the fiscal year twenty four adopted budget, and the increase is related to salaries, replacement of an automated material handling, handling machine at the library, furniture at the senior center, and an increase in electricity costs that we're seeing in the various facilities. The divisions that are included in culture and rec are the library, life safety park, the core, park operations, the senior center, wagon wheel, tennis and pickleball center, the biodiversity education center, as well as the camps and athletics programs, and then the community engagement division. Next is the light blue section of the pie that represents community development. Community development makes up five percent of the total general fund operations, operating expenditures in both years. Community development is down one percent, and this is the result of, it's a net result of an increase in salaries, the addition of two positions. They've asked, that we've added a senior code enforcement officer and an economic development coordinator position to this proposed budget. So it includes that. And then the budget for fiscal year twenty five includes five hundred thousand for the food truck park. Fiscal year twenty four had a million dollars. So we've reduced that project from a million to five hundred. That's really why you're seeing the decrease. The divisions included in community development are environmental health, building inspections, planning, economic development, and then just overall community development administrative. And then the last section is the general government section represented by the purple. This function makes up twenty percent of total operating expenditures in fiscal year twenty five proposed, and it represented nineteen percent in fiscal year twenty four adopted. This is a twelve percent increase, and the increase is attributed to including cybersecurity, some, some cost of cybersecurity, an increase in software subscription costs, salaries for the divisions included under general government. And the divisions included under general government are council, legal, city manager, city secretary, community information officer, or office, strategic financial engagement, procurement, employee experience, enterprise solutions, and then the combined services. So operating expenditures by, by function as a percent of total expenditures are really relatively consistent between years. But let's take a look at expenditures by classification.
Before we go there-
Okay.
In the community development, you said that there was going to be the addition of one code enforcement. Is that going to keep up with the increase in rentals and other things that we've talked about this year?
That's one of the objectives, yes.
Is that enough?
I would rather say, let's get into it and be able to come back to you and say if it is or it's not.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Somebody, yeah, Kevin?
Kim, I am so sorry if I missed this. The combined services, I noticed on the, the change for twenty four, twenty five, basically twenty four and a half million. And that's on page ten. What, what's in that twenty four million change? And I do apologize if you said that.
No, no, no. It's good. So in that is, I have it here. Um, so, in that is, I have it here, combined services. So, it is the net change in the one-time transfer, um, between fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five proposed. And so, in twenty-four, we, um, budgeted the, um, five point, almost five point seven for the capital replacement and almost one point one for enterprise solutions.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And then, so that's gone away, but now we're doing thirty-one million.
Okay.
So, the difference is about twenty-four million, right? And then, um, the other piece is, um, we are doing the normal transfer that we would do annually to replenish the capital replacement and enterprise solutions replacement fund.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's the other piece of it. So, we're adding that.
So, you have the one time, but then the, back to the regular replenishment?
Correct.
Okay.
This year, we have the regular. And then, um, this year we decreased the internship, we have an intern program.
Mm-hmm.
And so, we reduced the number of interns that we're going to, to do. So, um, I think that answers.
Interns are free?
Council member Walker's question about what's in combined services.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, thank you for bringing me back to that.
Okay, all right.
Meant to do that.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Did you, Kim, how many employees are we total budgeting for FY twenty-five, full-time and part-time?
Um, it is four forty-eight. It's an increase of two. So, um, thank you. Right, so the current is four four six point three six. And then, because we're adding the two positions for community development, that would put it to four four eight point three six.
Out of the four four six, how many full-time, how many part-time?
Um, I cannot tell you that off the top of my head.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I look at full-time equivalents, I don't look at full-time versus part-time. An increase of two, two, for community development. So, next, we're gonna look at operating expenditures sparked by classification. Um, the largest piece of this pie is salary and benefits. Um, and it is represented by the blue section. Um, salaries and benefits represent sixty percent of total operating expenditures in fiscal year twenty-four. Um, for fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget, salary and benefits represent sixty-nine percent. And this is a twelve percent increase from prior year adopted. Um, salaries and benefits includes, again, the two additional, uh, positions for community development. And it also incorporates the results of the compensation study.
Well, you're, you're looking at the, by classification, huh?
I am. So, it's the bottom, it's the two, um.
Right. But I'm, I'm, yeah, no, okay. But, but it shows a decrease, right? But the salary and benefits are sixty percent. Oh, you're looking at this one?
Yeah.
Thank you, okay.
Yeah, I'm looking at this.
Yeah. I was looking at the whole pie. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
May I have a matcha too?
That's where the skewing comes in. If we have the thirty-one million, it skews all of the other percentages.
Got you, okay.
Which is really why I, we needed to see it this way.
Yes. Really apparent that point.
Pramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Kim, um, the bottom graph, the salaries and benefit, um, have gone up like, let's say, five point five or six million. Is that, uh, primarily cost, cost of living increase and the two heads?
The, the first is, if you recall, public safety, uh, police and fire, uh, we were significantly behind on our top third, um, yeah, from a salary, right, from a salary standpoint. Uh, about half of that is right. Well, half is in the public safety, police and fire, um, increasing their pay grades and their steps. And so, changes to be back in the market on that. Uh, the next was, uh, from a market analysis, so in twenty twenty-two, I guess it was, uh, the city authorized to do a complete comp analysis. And a lot of focus was put at the, uh, the grades that were the lower pay grades, let's just say that. So, in the market analysis, the update, so now, basically, it's the equivalent of two and a half years, basically. Uh, there were some adjustments that needed to still be made in those pay grades. Uh, and then our market adjustment is at, uh, I'm sorry, the merit pay is at three point five, three point five percent. So, that's the three major changes that are attributed for that increase.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, the next four categories, supplies, maintenance, services, and capital are relatively consistent between years. Um, the detail for the capital category is on page thirteen of your packet. Capital is down fifty-one percent, but this category does change, um, from year to year based on requests. And then, I would say, it's also, you know, achieving the goals of the replacement funds. The, the purpose of the replacement funds is to have more of a, um, even budget from year to year, right? So, that we're only doing the, um, the transfer, or the transfer, the one-year transfer every year. So, you wouldn't, you wouldn't expect to see equipment and things being requested out of this budget since you fully funded the replacement fund, um, last year. So, that's, that, that is working. Um, and then the last portion of the pie is for transfers. This classification has the, um, uh, was thirteen percent in fiscal year twenty-four adopted, and it's only three percent in the proposed. And we, I think, spent a lot of time talking about the transfer. So, um, again, the general fund normally transfers the traffic and the facilities transfer on an annual basis. We are not doing that since we are proposing to do the thirty-one million. So, are there any questions regarding expenditures?
I'm sorry, what are we not doing because of the thirty-one million?
The hundred ninety thousand for traffic system and the one point two for facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Because we're doing that state transfer.
Got you.
Kim, would that, that, um, hypothetically, would that come back in next year's budget?
No.
The lowers, and so, the goal is to keep that off for the next five years because of, is that, is that right? Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. On the transfers, um, there's a seven point five million drop, uh, compared to last year. And we talked about it, one point eight, one point nine, uh, in the previous slide. But how do you explain the seven point five, Kim? Thanks for.
Transfer.
Was the question bugged wrong?
No, don't understand your question.
I think he's asking about the difference.
So, uh, in, in this handout that Kim gave us, uh, the, the transfers compared to last year has dropped seven point five million. Earlier on, we, we talked in the general fund, sorry, uh, what is that?
I did not pull the six million dollars out of that. I'm thinking.
You're talking about for the capital replacement and for the enterprise solutions?
I think I did. I think that's what happened.
So, it's not bugged along, so?
I don't think it is.
What's that? It's not bugged along.
I didn't say you were, I just didn't understand your question.
I'll have to check that. I'll check that.
Thank you.
Can we move on? Good, okay.
Except for Don.
Except for me. Uh, can you explain, because I, I sort of need a reset on capital replacement funds, like we've done the last two years, and IMF, and exactly how they are different? Or, uh, the, the capital replacement, I know, is ongoing every year. We got, whether it's a fire truck or whatever it is that needs to be replaced, we forecast out and we replace that. But, so the IMF, those are one-time projects, is that?
That's how we see those, those one-time projects.
So, it's not ongoing maintenance?
Um, I think, I mean.
So, the IMF on the transfer, like on the sidewalks and those types of things, uh, we continue to budget for, when I'm saying it this way. Um, fortunately, over time, we've been able to reduce the amount because of the amount of funds that were invested in sidewalks for a long time. But, um, so, it's a one-time expense, but it's an ongoing, if that makes any sense to you. When we replace a sidewalk, we move on to the next sidewalk to replace. That's a long-time fix. Then we move to the next, right?
Right.
Um, for the streets, if there's things that have to be done on the streets, like the panels, that's an investment. And, and when we approve the budget, when y'all, uh, approve those contracts, usually those contracts are like up-twos, right? And I think, uh, it, sometimes it takes two years to spend the up-twos on those panels, as an example, or on some of the street work that's done. Uh, but you're budgeting for it in that particular year. It's in the IMF fund. Is that helping?
Well, uh, uh, for whatever reason, it's not, it's not really. Because I thought, I also heard that we were not, we always fund the traffic and the facilities. But then, I thought I also heard that we aren't going to transfer those monies in the future.
Because we built that into the thirty-one million?
But I guess, but I, but I thought that the thirty-one million was only the streets piece.
Mm-hmm. It's not anything to do with streets. The thirty-one million has nothing to do with it.
I guess I'll, I'll just have to follow up, because I'm not, I'm not catching something. Uh, I mean, I, I don't have any doubt in the fact that we've allocated a bunch of money for the infrastructure. I was just confused how we're not.
Okay.
Having to continue to budget.
Let's stop. So, in an annual budget.
Right.
One point two million dollars typically has been, right, part of the budget for streets. It is still part of the budget for streets. So, tell me what you, what I'm not answering in that answer.
There's thirty-one million dollars that we were gonna spend for that one, on that.
That's what we're saying. That's not, we're still budgeting the one point two million dollars for streets. The third, the thirty-one set aside, forget streets, and the thirty-one million for a moment. Okay? Are you with me or not?
I'm not su, well, public, no, I guess I'm not. I, I'm not tracking.
So, so go, let's go back. Go back to what is exactly in the thirty-one million dollar transfer? Let's just talk about that.
Okay. So.
Only, what's in the thirty-one million?
Only what's in the thirty-one million are things for, it's the, uh, facility, the annual facilities transfer, which is usually about one point two million. It is a roof replacement for Cosby Library. It is, uh, the hangar, the work that's being done over at the hangar. It is the live, uh, lobby safety improvements at Town Center. It's the library generator, um, being installed at the Cosby Library. It is the, um, an, so, and then it's the, uh, employee experiences doing a little remodel of their area. There is a dehumidifier for the core. There is a generator for the senior center. The entrance, uh, replacing the concrete at the entrance at the justice center. Um, fire station three has some interior construction. Um, animal shelter has some work that's gonna be done, um, that, and then they're doing, um, safety and security study for two sixty-five. There are building improvements for two sixty-five. There is, um, fire station one has some interior construction, wagon wheel restroom installation. Um, and then Town Center elevator hydraulic pump replacement. And then, fire station two has some interior reconstruction. So, no streets, just, just that. And then, there's also, um, and I, I didn't list it in this, but then there's a hundred ninety thousand for the next, um, four years, four or five years for traffic.
Okay.
Okay. So, none of that's in the thirty-one million, strictly traffic and facilities. And because we've.
None of that is in the thirty-one million? None of that's in the thirty-one million?
No, streets are in thirty-one million. I'm sorry. Street, no, no streets are in the thirty-one million, just what I read off to you.
Okay. So, that makes sense, one-time for a one-time or.
Right.
Somewhat designated projects. But I thought we transferred money every year into IMF for public work, out of the general, I, I, out of the general fund budget, I should say.
Correct.
But we're not doing that any longer.
So, because we are, we included it in the thirty-one million, we will not make an annual transfer for twenty-five through twenty-eight because it's built in. These are the projects they said they need. We're fully funding these projects, so we're not gonna transfer money in for facilities and traffic. We are going to continue the annual transfer for streets. And I say streets blanket because it's for alleys, sidewalks, streets, and ADA.
So, that's still being transferred every year?
Every year. And it's about almost one point seven million. That is staying as an annual transfer.
So, theoretically, at the end of twenty-eight, so we've done all these projects at the end of twenty-eight, theoretically, there will be a new transfer for new facilities.
If they're.
That need to be addressed sometime.
Right, well, that goes back to the five-year forecast. And it goes back to the work that we do on an annual basis. So, when, when you project out to the next four years to twenty-nine, if there's something on the facilities, they'll identify that as well. Then we are building that into the budget as we go, as we look forward to the budgets. One of the things we do on that five-year forecast, too, is we, we almost go down to one percent after, right, in terms of growth. And so, we're, we're projecting out almost with zero growth in the property tax base. And then balancing the budget, I mean, we're already, we're already working to balance the budget in twenty-eight.
Yeah.
I think this might help you, too, is, these, to me, are bigger projects, right? That we're paying for.
Right.
We're still doing, these facilities still has a maintenance budget. It still has a building maintenance budget. So, there's still money being budgeted to care for our facilities for painting or small type of things, right? Just normal repair and maintenance. These are big things that we're funding. So, I would make that clarification.
So, we've taken thirty-one million dollars in capital projects and we're transferring it one time, even though we're recognizing that the payment of those projects, as they're designed and implemented, struck like that, will take over a five-year period. So, how do we, so let's say, in twenty-six, we've spent fifteen of thirty-one million on those capital projects. How do we book that? How do we, how do we reflect that? Because we've already funded the projects, right, in twenty-five, we're gonna carry, we're gonna have that money segregated and, and used to fund all those projects over a three-year period. So, then, in, in the twenty-six budget, we're not gonna show that those projects or that thirty-one million or the balance of thirty-one million, right? So, where do we, where do we book that?
So, it's recorded in the infrastructure maintenance fund.
Ah, okay.
Right, so, the thirty-one million comes in, it's a revenue in fiscal year twenty-five of the infrastructure maintenance fund. We're not gonna spend thirty-one million. It's gonna go into fund balance, just like much of the sales tax, right? Those, those funds, you've, you've watched the fund balance of those funds that are receiving sales tax grow. We don't spend all we get. It's there for projects for multi-employee.
But if we wanted to see in two years, so how do we do with that thirty-one million dollar capital outlet? That we would just look to the accounting for the IMF?
Yes. If you, if, just, last Monday, if you turn to page twenty-four under seven fifteen twenty-four, then if you have your book with you and you look at the IMF, the actual, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three fund balance was basically twenty-seven point five. The adopted for twenty-three, twenty-four was twenty-eight point two. The proposed budget is fifty-six point three.
Yeah, right. So, I'd be, I'd understand.
So, as each year goes through, there's the list of the projects that y'all see.
Right.
And so, that, that number will be coming down.
Sure, sure.
And it's married to projects.
But if, yeah, and so, the only point is if we wanted to look two years from now and see how we're doing.
What your status is.
The thirty-one that we're proving today, that we're setting aside and then dispersing to a dedicated fund.
Right.
I mean, the accounting will be there, we'll, we'll see based on, because we're not gonna, like, so we're not gonna spend all thirty-one million in the first six months, right? It's, it's for a long-term capital projects. Okay, I mean, that, yeah, I mean, I, that makes sense to me.
And we have to keep track, even the money that comes in for sales tax for the streets, I don't cover them. It's in IMF, but I keep track of that separate and apply streets projects, not facility or traffic.
Right, right.
So, we have to, whatever's coming in for facilities, we'll be monitoring how much comes. comes out of that.
So the distinguishing factor really was not the year-to-year alley repair stuff, or the street repair stuff. It was large capital projects that are going to fund over a period of years from design and inception all the way through final construction.
Right.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, these, again, these to me are not, we fund them every year from the general fund, but to me, it's not normal, normal repair and maintenance from an operating perspective. These are bigger projects.
And is it fair to also presume that the interest income would be contributed to, at least in part by the thirty-one million, any interest we would earn on that fund as well, while, before it's spent?
Correct. Yeah, so once we transfer the thirty-one million over there, assuming you adopt the proposed budget, that gets transferred over. Now, all of the interest on that thirty-one million will go to IMF.
Okay. So what, so once you go to IMF, you stay in IMF?
It stays there, the interest.
Right, because it's a dedicated fund.
It's different, it's different businesses.
So this transfer is just a, a one-time, like, phenomenon from the general fund to the IMF that we're using to fund distinct capital projects?
Correct.
Gotcha.
And for example, Jim, an interest for next year, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But that stays in IMF, once the funds are transferred.
Correct.
Okay.
It's a separate set of us.
You mentioned four components. One is the back alley, street, sidewalk, and ADA. How much money is coming from general fund, and how much money is coming from sales tax to pay for that?
So, sales tax, that was presented last Monday. You know, we're budgeting as if the rule is in effect. So the sales tax budgeted in IMF was three point nine. And then we're showing, well, we're showing the transfer, that's thirty two point two. Okay, but thirty-one million of that is for, for facilities and traffic. So one, it was about one point six is what we're moving from the general fund to IMF for more, more street alleys and sidewalks. So you have the three point nine for streets, and then you have the a million six hundred and fifty-six thousand for streets, alleys, and sidewalks.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand, you said, there's no money is used from thirty-one million dollars transferred for street, sidewalk, back alley, and ADA?
Correct.
But is just a transfer of money?
Transfer one point six million from the general fund. Don't, I'm going to say this hopefully the right way. Continue to think of the thirty-one million dollars different. The one point six, to her point, traditionally, let's use that term, traditionally, from year-over-year budget, the one point six is what's being transferred in.
From general fund?
From general fund.
And sales tax?
The s...
From the IMF fund?
Sales tax, she just said it was about three point nine.
Three point nine.
But, but if I, I understand the question, sales tax, there is, there's no, how can I say this? The one point six million that gets transferred, we don't, we don't divide it up between sales tax and property tax and franchise fees and everything like that. There, so there's no division of the one point six?
One percent of sales tax is coming to general fund.
Yeah, okay. I know that. Okay, I just want to make sure that we're all...
Yeah, that's plus the sales tax revenue for the IMF.
Correct.
Yes.
Good?
Okay. I've got, probably goes back to my original problem. So public works really is going down. We're spending less on public works this year. So even, even with increased salaries, what, what are we not having to spend, I guess? What's, what's, what's allowing us to shave?
Well, I wouldn't say that we're spending less on public works, because part of public works is facilities and traffic, and you're spending thirty-one million on that.
Over time.
Over time, you're transferring money over there. So, we've just removed the transfer from public works. We've removed the hundred ninety thousand transfer from traffic, from the traffic division, and we've removed the one point two million for facilities from that division, because we are taking basically fund balance of the general fund to fund those two items for many years.
So this is still not apples and oranges, I mean, this is still not apples and apples, then, like, year-over-year of what we're spending?
That was the, that was the yes and. Correct.
It's not, so we are, we're not decreasing public works, that's...
We are not decreasing the care of our infrastructure. No, that is not happening.
Technically, they're spending more than last year, but the graph shows that they're spending less.
Okay.
You froze the picture.
Can you? Is it that, or is it...
It's my smooth dulce voice. It makes the presentation go to sleep.
Yeah, it's meaning, it's not...
It's called numbers.
The last thing to say, Jim?
When do we get to the budget on the AB?
Yeah.
We're spending this...
What do we, how much were we spending on AB?
We can go to page fourteen in your packet.
Yeah, there you go.
I see, he's...
Can I ask a quick question in the interim period here? Going back to page four?
Okay.
And I, I don't, I don't know that you'll have this information, but I was just curious if they'll have heard anything. What, any sense for why the taxable value of the commercial industrial went up almost thirty-two percent? I mean, it's not new construction, right?
Well, if you look up, if you look...
Are they finally going after the...
It's reappraisals.
Right.
Really, if you look at the, they have for commercial, eight hundred and seventy-one million, four hundred and seventy thousand in reappraisals for commercial.
Yeah.
And the commercial also includes your business personal property, which right now is...
That went up almost eleven percent.
Yeah.
So is it just that they, they finally maxed out on pirating up all the values for homes, and now they're going after the commercial property?
Well, they did. It's six hundred and seventeen million of reappraisals for homes, for those...
Yeah, no, no doubt. It's, that's gone sky-high, too. But it looks like they finally woke up and realized that, I mean, thirty-one percent, almost thirty-two percent is pretty amazing in a single year.
Well, we don't know where it'll end.
Fair enough.
We'll know next month.
No, no, yeah.
It'll be curious to see what happens.
Mr. Thomas, I'm not. Thank you, Kim.
Right there. It works?
And Jim, this is quickly, the most volatile is that business and personal property.
Yeah, why is that?
It's all about challenges and inventory.
Okay.
You know, in terms of, when they go down the appraisal district, things...
They tend to be a little bit more allowing in the, creating challenges?
It's just volatile from year to year, and for business to business, depending on what's on.
Yeah.
There's more money.
Well, I would think particularly this year, that's thirty-two percent. That's a, that's I want.
Page fourteen.
Page, okay, so page fourteen is really, is on the screen also. This, this slide shows total fund balance is projected to be a hundred and eleven point three million at September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. This is a decrease of about thirty-one million, which is the amount of the transfer to IMF. I also left in your packet, you can see the, the big zero, and it says for IMF traffic and facility projects. And it's zero now, because now it's included up in your expenditure amount. Okay? On page fourteen, you can see, that's why your expenditures are a hundred and five million, is because we've increased those expenditures for the thirty-one million dollar transfer. It's no longer going to be in the general fund, it's going to be in IMF, if the proposed budget is adopted. Okay? So this slide shows the results of the classifications that included, that were included in the excess revenue allocation guidelines that we discussed at the June council retreat. And the guidelines are also on page twenty-one of your packet. It also includes the requirements included in the fund balance policy, which begins on page twenty-two of your packet. The fund balance is required to be broken out by the categories shown, so by non-spendable, committed, assigned, and unassigned. That's for financial reporting purposes, so we like to keep that for budget purposes. The non-spendable is the ten percent of budgeted expenditures required by charter. The committed category includes the fifteen percent of expenditures included in the fund balance policy. And then the assigned is the areas covered by the excess revenue allocation guidelines. And then the last category is unassigned, and that's where you find the undesignated fund balance. And the fund balance policy requires the undesignated fund balance to be maintained at fifty percent of budgeted expenditures. So do you have any questions on the fund balance walk?
No, but Ramesh had a question before that.
Thank you, Mayor. Kim, back on page fourteen, the top box, we have the less budgeted expenditures fiscal year twenty-five. I see the hundred and five million, six hundred and nine thousand. That includes the thirty-one million dollar, so my understanding was that thirty-one mil, sorry, let me reset my question. When I look at this line, to me, it feels like we are planning to spend a hundred and five million, six hundred and nine thousand next year. Is that a wrong assumption?
We are not spending that thirty-one million dollars in one year.
The, the budgeted expenditure FY twenty-five threw me off.
I understand, but that's, it's up to the accounting standpoint.
I have to get it out of the fund somehow. The only way I can get it out of the fund is to run it through your consent statement. Right? So I have to show it as an expenditure of the general fund, and then I show it as a revenue of, of the infrastructure maintenance fund. So the net impact, if you were just to consider the whole government...
Entire plan.
Of the city as one fund, then the impact would be zero. Because your revenues are thirty-one million in one fund, your expenditures are thirty-one, they net out to you. You are not spending thirty-one. You're just moving money from one business entity to another business entity.
Okay.
Okay? From one bucket to another.
Just to be intricate.
From your wife's checking account to yours, or maybe the other way around?
It's a better one.
Jim, did you...
Yes, sir. Thank you. Remind me, what's the DART project?
Tracy, can you help me with that? So that is, in partnership with DART, we have installed a number of enhancements to all of the improvements that are coming through our community. So if you'll notice, the, it's things like, for the crossing, yes, on South Beltline, we've got the rusticated bands, we've added painting, we've added upgraded fencing. Those are the types of things that that money will...
There was the upgrades that we asked for.
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
And here's the deal, we don't know when they're ever going to ask us for that money.
Well, give it a...
We know that they're going to, we just don't know when. So when that day comes, that'll be in the middle of the season.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mike.
Are we good?
Yes.
Well, I've got, I've got a question. The strategic reserve, is that just a plug number? Is that just the X, whatever? Didn't fit anywhere else, basically? We just assign it to strategic reserve, right?
We do.
Because the bottom number, the thirty-seven million, that's the fifty, that's calculated at fifty percent.
Right. And the strategic reserve, that's all about, if the rule goes into effect, this helps us figure out what we're going to do. Instead of taking a buzz cut, we can...
Right. Okay, that makes sense. And just philosophically, you know, we have to do fifty percent of the unreserved, undesigned, it has to be fifty percent of budgeted expenditures.
Right.
Philosophically...
That's John's policy.
And I did, I...
That's ours.
So...
It's not charter.
Right, that is, it's just our policy, and I take it, I removed that one-time transfer to calculate that. I didn't take it of a hundred and five million, I took it, the seventy-four million.
Seventy-five, seventy-four, something like that.
I was going to make a comment, kind of to that, the guidelines of fund balance policies, those are just policies. Those were set by us and have been modified over time. They're not fixed. I mean, they're, we can change them if there's a reason to change them. There's reasons why the numbers are there. Some of it has to do with the, you know, rating audit, et cetera, et cetera, but there, and there are, so those are always negotiable.
Okay. And the fifteen percent is also just policy. That's just our policy also, right? So it's actually sixty-five percent?
Y'all are kind of jumping ahead.
Well, philosophically, philosophically, though, let's say all this, all this assignment, these funds weren't here, and we didn't have thirty-seven million dollars undesigned, would we just, I guess, per the policy, we would just fund, that undesigned or unreserved spot would be just whatever was left? I mean, if the, if the money wasn't there, if the funds weren't there, we couldn't hit fifty percent.
Yeah. Let me suggest, though, I don't, I don't see, at least for us, we won't want to get there.
The policy also has a replenishment section, where what do you do if anything falls outside of the policy?
Okay, okay, so it has remedies or something like that? Okay. So I'm jumping ahead on the fifteen percent plus the fifty?
That's another section.
Okay, sorry.
So, let's move on to council's budget. And so council's budget can be found on page fifteen and sixteen. Page fifteen provides an overview of council's budget, and then page sixteen provides the line item details of council's budget. The line item detail does include the direction given last Monday regarding the service organization request. It does not include anything additional for Special Olympics. I think we sent out an email sharing with you what we received from Special Olympics, and so we're waiting for further direction on if you want anything additional included. So based on the information before you, council's budget is increasing a hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars over fiscal year twenty-four adopted budget. And the primary reasons for the increase in council's budget are the fiscal year twenty-five proposed includes twenty thousand dollars for a community engagement survey. It includes seventy-five thousand for a refresh of the twenty forty strategic plan. It increased council's training budget by fifteen thousand, and then it increased legislative travel by twenty thousand, because fiscal year twenty-five is a legislative year. So that is really the reason that your budget went up. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes. Kevin?
Could you talk to me a little bit more about the refresh of the twenty forty?
I think Tracy... I sure can.
Hey, Tracy? That was a nice little choreographed head swish there, from my angle.
Yes.
It was good.
So we, that fiscal year twenty-five is our five-year mark, and so what we, consistent with what we have done during the five-year mark for twenty thirty, we will be inviting a facilitator to come in and help us facilitate some conversations with our community to kind of do just a check-in on how we're doing with the plan, get some feedback from the community around their perceptions of how the plan is going, if it's still applicable, those types of things. So that's what that funding will help us walk through with the community.
Is the vision of that, does that include, like, council feedback on how, like, we think the plan is going, as well as the citizen?
One hundred percent.
Okay. All right, Chris.
Yes, we learned many things during the initial development of the plan itself, and one of those lessons learned is that while it is the community's plan, this, the council needs to have more engagement with that process in order to really kind of feel and understand where, how that is all developed and how it's shaking out.
Are we engaging the same firm that built the plan?
Well, it will be an RFP, and it will be open, but we have not, I've not had any conversations, there are no discussions around specifically engaging with future IQ.
I look forward to revisiting that plan. All right, excellent.
To keep in mind...
Yes, sir.
That we, as a council, decided to keep our hands off until the final...
I was not on council at that time, man.
He was on the steering committee.
I was on the steering committee.
Recommended this.
That's why I'm reminding you, that's why I'm reminding you as a council member now that... that we decided at the point to let the system take its course and review...
Noted, Mayor.
And all that will be coming back to...
So the mayor for Portim is criticizing the steering committee that he was...
No, not at all. Not at all. It's, you learn a lot from seeing a plan from multiple perspectives, I think is what I'm alluding at, so...
Well, I thought you were wondering why we let the committee have so much freedom during the process.
I wonder that as well, sir. No, that's, that's good information. Thank you so much for answering that.
So before Kim moves on, I've just, she made a comment, there was discussion at last Monday's meeting about specifically Special Olympics and Love Thy Neighbor. If there's any desire to alter those numbers, time's kind of coming down.
So, I'm sorry, I thought it was my understanding that we were going to wrap that up at the end, but you want feedback now?
Anytime during this meeting is.
All right. Standby.
Can I, can I ask about the training expense, or what maybe you're going to ask? What training does council, the training expense is that?
You have TML.
Okay.
And then some of you have attended some other additional TML-type training. And then there is the North Texas Commission, I think, CJ, you're going to be in that class this year.
Okay. Okay. So it's...
You're doing it.
Training.
Oh, good. That's awesome.
So TML falls...
Yeah, TML, NTC, anything that y'all do with any of the, I'm just going to say National League of Cities, or US Conference of Mayors.
Okay. But I did notice it projected to go up.
Yeah, it'd be interesting, because I think next year it's actually in Fort Worth, TML, if I remember right. And so we'll be closer to home, but that doesn't mean that you won't stay, you know, do those kind of things. This year it's in Houston.
But is this, so this doesn't cover Houston?
This, yes, this...
This budget would cover Houston, though, wouldn't it?
It's because it's incurred right now. Yeah, the expense is being incurred right now with registration and everything.
Oh, so it's, okay.
Right.
Yes. So tell us when it would come after that.
Right.
That's not confusing at all.
Welcome to the change of fiscal year. So it's the same way.
Okay.
So Kim, in the past year, we included a storage expense at the council budget for the drama people. Where did we move that to?
So the theater has to, do you have that? They had, the theater has to submit a request, just like all of the other service works, and they pay for that themselves now.
Okay. So yeah, it's not coming from our budget.
Right. And how much do they... They requested $12,000 again, so that was consistent with last year. Yeah.
Hey, good question. On the, going back to the training, does that also include, like, the luncheons that we go to for different, like, chamber lunches, or North Texas Commission, or...
Tracy's not in her head saying yes.
Because I know so. Okay. Because it's not everything else in there, just the membership fee, not like if I go to something. Now, some of those, we get a table at some events included within that, but some, there are many events that that registration is not included.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So the next section is debt service fund.
Mayor, quick question. So I did get a response from Patty Simmons, who was presented at Special Olympics. I don't have a firm number to present to everyone, but basically she said that she had inclination to host an in-season basketball tournament and things like that. Let's hear, she said, would, she basically asked me, like, would we have some time to explore what would, what we would like to prioritize and come up with a dollar figure? So I wanted to make sure that the council heard that sentence, because she's obviously interested in trying to do something. There was also something, I think, about swimming or something like that, or securing a venue for CIST gyms. There was a couple of things there. I think that they just wanted to know, like, like, I guess, what kind of time that they would, they would need to explore, you know, what, if we're offering additional funds, like, what would be the best use of that, so...
So we have, we would need to know to be able to present to you next on the 29th, because that budget then becomes the proposed budget that we file and have to have filed by August 5th.
So if I reply to her today and just say, if you could get us a dollar figure before, and then I could, like, how, I'm trying not to overstep my bounds as a single council member and wanted to share information.
It's in, we had, we had, they, she was pretty thorough, I mean...
She gave a pretty, if you look at that email that we sent out...
Oh, that's the email that came from you, with like the swimming and stuff like that?
Yes.
Sorry, I was having a conversation with her as well, so, okay.
Yeah. And then she gave a breakdown of all these, quote, uncovered expenses, is the way she said it.
Got it. Okay. I couldn't find the email.
I actually, you know, I am aligned with Kevin. She gave us a breakdown, but now, because she's not asked for a number, we have to decide if we're going to approve two of them or all of them.
Where'd that email come from? I apologize.
It's Friday, Friday at 3:00 p.m.
Friday at 3:00 p.m. Ah, here we go. Got it. Ah, yeah. That's what I was looking for.
Let's take about a five-minute recess while Kevin looks us up, and, what's that? It is 7:37.
So you just had this.
So you just had this.
Okay, yes.
And I'm proposing. I believe Mayor Kirk Tim has a proposal.
Okay, so finding the email that I was looking for. So Ms. Patty Simmons, she had sent in a couple of items. So she has a couple of unfunded items. So I'm proposing that we fund $2,750 for swim team swimsuits. And then we also fund $2,201, because that's what she asked for specifically.
You can count numbers.
So I guess whatever that math is, so forty-nine.
What if it colors?
Yeah, we're going five thousand.
And one dollar.
No, we're not, we're gonna stay out of the dollar, okay. So what I'm proposing is we fund $5,000 in addition to what they asked for to cover the swimsuits and their state swim meet, like the Knights there. And then on the Love Thy Neighbor, they sent in some information about that. So I think they asked for $2,000. So I'm proposing that we give them an extra $1,000 to bring it to $3,000 to cover some of their additional. I know that they said they had some other ask and stuff like that. So in total, eight grand. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, six grand additional. That five thousand for Special Olympics and 1,000 extra for Love Thy Neighbor. That's what I'm proposing. There you go.
We don't, we're not gonna do a vote, but can I get a thumbs up that this will be included in Kim's budget next week? I see three, four.
She lowered it from eight to six.
Well, I mean, that two thousand dollars.
There's a transfer to the IMF.
It'll just be a one-time transfer.
Don, I want to see you in my office.
Thirty-one million, eight thousand dollars. That's the total transfer.
No, we're gonna take Don over to Kevin.
Thanks, guys. I know they'll appreciate that.
Thank you, we appreciate that information. Okay, the next area is debt service. It's on page seventeen of your packet. That is where you can find.
This is also item number seven on our agenda?
Yes. This slide is on page seventeen of your packet. This fund's resource, revenue source is only from the INS portion of the property tax rate. And it can only be, the INS portion of property tax rate can only be set at the amount needed to generate enough revenue to cover the principal and interest payments due during the year. The fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget includes property tax revenue that will be generated if property values grow seven percent and we maintain the INS portion of the property tax rate at the current rate of .070152, that was discussed earlier this evening, and at your council retreat in June. This was the strategy that was presented at that retreat. So the total property tax-supported principal and interest due in fiscal year twenty-five is $8,469,645, and that's what's shown on page eighteen in your packet. It is the top number in the third column under total. However, the current property tax rate at a seven percent growth in values will only generate $7,889,969, which is the property tax revenue shown at the top of page seventeen of your packet. Fund balance of the debt service fund will be used to cover the difference between property tax revenue provided by the INS tax rate and the principal and interest payments due in fiscal year twenty-five. A portion of the debt service fund's fund balance can be used, and the fund will still have a fund balance level that complies with the city's fund balance policy. Again, use of the fund balance is a strategy that was provided to you at your June retreat. The strategy is to first use the excess fund balance of the debt service fund, and then we would start using the amount that we have set aside in the general fund's fund balance. We have $2 million set aside there. And so that would be used in future years. So. So just also to point out that the property tax revenue shown in this pie chart includes 20,000 that is expected to be received from penalties and interest on delinquent taxes. That's why that amount for property taxes is 7.9. But when you look at page seventeen, you see 7.8. Okay, I just wanted to make sure you understood the difference there. The transfer in of the 3.4 million that's shown up there, that represents the transfer from Water Sewer Fund and from CRDC for their share of penalties and interest on certificate of obligations issued for water and sewer and CRDC projects, because water sewer revenues and CRDC's sales tax is being used to pay for the bonds issued for those projects. So the total principal and interest shown on the graph is about 11.9 million. And that is the total principal and interest due on all outstanding certificate of obligation debt. That's the debt issue for general projects as well as water sewer projects as well as CRDC projects. And if you recall, we began showing all CO debt regardless of the funding source in this fund so that we provided more transparency to the public on the amount of COs outstanding. And that's because if anything were to happen to the revenue source of water sewer or to CRDC, property taxes would have to be set to cover all CO debt. Now, we don't anticipate that happening, but just for transparency purposes. And then page eighteen of your packet, it shows a schedule for total tax-supported debt. The current principal amount of bonds outstanding is 104, about 104.6 million dollars. That does include the bond issue that was just passed by council on July ninth. Fifty-two percent of outstanding bonds will be, on page eighteen, will be paid off in 2034, and then eighty percent would be paid off by 2039. Did I say 2034? Goodness, yeah. Would be paid off in 2034, and then eighty percent would be paid off in 2039. Do you have any questions regarding debt service?
Kim, just a question. So, you know, obviously seeing the difference in there, that, you know, that transfer, that transfer in on there. So my question is, is that, so we've got 2 million set aside on that fund balance line item for the INS property tax rate stabilization. You said in your presentation there that that was like, for the next couple of years, we're gonna use that. Is that right?
So the presentation that Jason prepared for us, it had using debt service fund balance for a couple of years. And then it had using general fund fund balance for a few years after that. The total amount needed was just, was about $2 million of the general fund. And so that's why you see in the, in this fund balance, you see the 2 million down here. It's INS property tax rate stabilization. So that's what that is. It stays there because we're not using any of that.
Absolutely. But so that's gonna be, so you said, we're gonna use, we're gonna use that fund balance in a couple of years, is what you're saying.
Potentially.
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 The numbers that they were using on the projection, again, was pretty much a flat number as far as growth. So if we have any growth of value, it means less that would have to be potentially pulled.
And that might actually answer my question, because, you know, obviously, kind of look into the next eight, nine years, that, you know, that total on the schedule here of debt is about, you know, kind of that 8.4, 8.5, 8.6. So that's why I was kind of, what's the long-term strategy look like for that? And I mean, is that just that, that growth and that balance with the, you know, the INS and MNO?
The set aside, the 2 million, is based on what Jason gave us. Any growth that we get means that we're not using that. So your strategy is, we have it set aside, it's ready to go, there's the fund balance, ready to go. And then as growth happens, you're just using less and less of the dollars.
Got it, okay. I'm just curious. Okay, all right, thank you very much.
So, Kim, on the, about 44 million dollars in COs that were just approved, I guess, those aren't all going to be sold this year, right?
Yes, they are.
They are. So the four to five percent yield is, is pretty, pretty much where we're gonna end up there.
Well, no. So, I mean, that's the face value of the interest rate on those bonds. But because Jason told you that we got a premium of several million dollars, the effective, the effective interest rate is three percent something.
Yeah.
That was about 3.8, 3.9.
Yeah. So the effective interest rate, what's 3.782?
Okay, we've got, we've got a book of it.
And we earned, the bond premium was about almost 4.5 million.
Yeah, okay.
So, and the 44 million, the 44.7 that you're seeing, that's for the general projects. And then we issued almost 4.7 for water sewer projects. So.
Okay.
So the total issue was 49, almost 49.4.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. The premium that we had when we issued that bond, let's say it's about 4, is it 4.5 million? Do we book it as revenue this year, or do we spread it over life of the bond?
So it gets recorded, the next, you wanna help me? So it gets recorded, it gets recorded in the bond projects, and then it's amortized over the life of the bonds.
Thank you.
So, next, we are just, we've already kind of talked about the fund balance policy. Alls I want to say is it's in your packet. August of last year is the last time that it was brought forward, and that's when we made the changes. We added the fifty percent of undesignedated, that we were gonna do fifty percent of budgeted expenditures as undesignedated for general fund. We also added the HOT, we added the HOT, a policy for the HOT and a couple of other ones. Let me look real quick. We added HOT and DUD. We added those two to the policy. I'm not recommending any changes to the fund balance policy at this time. We just discussed and made changes to the guidelines at your June. So this is just here, so you see this is what you have. And at this time, we're not making, we're not recommending changes unless there's something you want to see differently. And so then I am going to turn item number nine over to Jessica.
Right now, we're gonna come up with some, the initial proposed budget.
We didn't put this in your, in your packet because it's really only for legislative purposes. It means nothing. Truly, it means nothing. It is something SB two makes us do. We have to file an initial proposed budget. It's all based on estimates of a property tax rate and values. And now we have feedback from y'all of things that we need to input into the budget. So really, the budget that you get on the ninth is the one. But for legalities, Jessica is gonna present those to you.
So tonight, we present to you the fiscal year twenty-five initial proposed budget. Each year, the City of Capel is required by Local Government Code 102 to publish a proposed budget prior to the thirtieth day before the city council approves a tax rate. Beginning with the fiscal year 2021, Senate Bill Two imposed an earlier condensed schedule for budget and tax rate adoption. The initial proposed budget is a legal requirement, as Kim stated. This document is created before receiving certified values on July 25th. These conflicting deadlines cause staff to publish a proposed budget using estimates. The initial proposed budget and the estimated tax rate are not what council will take action on during the August 27 meeting. This draft is published exclusively to meet the city's legal requirements and obligations. A full-length proposed budget will be available for public review by August the fifth, as required by charter, on that deadline. At this time, we'll take any questions.
Move this forward if there's.
Basically, it is a legislatively required document.
Legally legislative required document.
You don't even have numbers to verify until after Thursday. And then on Friday, next, on the 29th, you'll actually have, here's where we are, from a budget standpoint. But this gives you at least some insight to the way things are looking. So that part adds a little bit of value. But as far as saying, I don't like this, or I don't like that, it's really irrelevant till we see the preliminary appraised values on Thursday.
We receive that.
Is it final? Yeah, the 27th.
The 20, well, we received, the 25th will receive certified values. We'll start working on the tax rate. So you'll know.
What we actually have.
What we have on the 29th. It's not certified till the county certifies it. We've always, we've been right. You know, our calculation has been correct and in agreement with the county. And then we move into starting all the postings. We have to post, you know, that you'll vote on a maximum tax rate. Because the first meeting in August, you'll vote on a maximum tax rate. You're not setting the tax rate. You're just voting on what we can average, what we can advertise as the maximum tax rate that you will consider when you vote on the tax rate in the budget.
One question, on page two, on the revenue side, it says sales tax is projected to decrease 35% from the prior year amended budget. But we are still collecting that tax.
Right, because we're budgeting as if the rule's in effect. And that's why we have to explain the difference, right? Amended budget is, because we're still collecting, so it's higher.
Because the amended includes the additional, like.
Yeah, just like this past year, after the audit was done, and we did amended budget for sales taxes, where she projected out, this is how much we're actually gonna collect versus, have to think in terms of adopted budget versus amended.
Adopted and proposed at this point.
Right, now it's adopted, amended and proposed.
Yeah. But that's the closest apples to apples is the.
So is page 24 basically the summary, the bottom line, all funds?
That's the one.
That is, right, Jessica?
Subject to change.
Yeah.
It's all subject to change. Until we get the certified tax.
And when do we get the certified values?
Thursday.
Thursday, wow.
And you said, did counties already survive?
They emailed out today that their certified values are available. I did not go out and look at them because they're such a small. They, the last time I looked at, they were at 249 million. So they're really a small portion of our value.
Thank you, Mayor. Kim, stop me from jumping ahead of the video. We're on page two. Under expenditures, you have budgeted expenditures totaling a number, which is a 25.14 increase. Are you planning to cover that in later slides?
So that, that is the total of all funds. So that's the total on page 24. And, and that's, that would include the 31 million that we've been talking about. So I'm not covering anything in this proposed budget.
Do we even put this in our notebook?
You can put it, because we have to, we have to share it with you. Because this will go on our website. We have to file it with the city secretary, and she has to make it available on the website. So we can, so you can have, you can have it, you can put it in there. But it, I mean, it is, it tells you where you are today.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just put it.
Yeah.
That's all I want to know.
Kim, on page 24, the line, the individual numbers all come from the previous sections that we covered, correct? And if you wanted to see what drove the increase last year versus this year, again, I'd go back to that individual sections to see?
I would, I would probably go to your notebook, what you say. I would, I would use what we handed out to you. I think it's easier to read. So if you look at all of the items in your notebook from last Monday, which is all the special revenue funds and water sewer, that's where I would look, because I think it's easier to read. I think this, I mean, this doesn't, it's not reader-friendly, in my opinion, how we have to pull it together. So that would be my recommendation.
So the format for this is even specified by statute effectively?
Somewhat, it is somewhat. Tells us what we have to have in it.
These, like the 180 million dollars in expenditures, that is an overstatement from what's actually being spent correctly, because that includes transfers.
Correct.
Same thing on, I mean, some of those revenues and expenditures technically should net out.
Right, it's like if you did a consolidation, if you had a company, you would have to eliminate those from your financials.
Okay, so this is just heading across the columns.
Correct.
Thanks for asking that, Don. So is there a number that we can, however, the net of transfers? So if transfers is, let's say, 6 million for next year, I'm trying to get a better understanding of what is it that we're spending next year? So if it is not 180, it is 180 net of the transfers, I'd like to understand what that number is.
That will be produced. It's part of the process when we come together, excuse me, on the 29th.
We have something.
That 180, there'll be, if, but if you pull your budget right now, you can look across your budget right now to get to the, what the total expenditures are, it'll be presented in that format. So if you pull this budget, you can see all the way across the board, total expenditures. That's what you're asking, right? So yes, it will be presented in that format.
This is just a document that we, that they prepare for statutory compliance, but it's before we have any kind of solid numbers.
They plan to spend money, I'm assuming, there must have been some assumptions for them to come up with this number.
So can I, can I interject? So August 5th, we file a document like this. So after the 29th, we present to you where we're at. On the 29th, you'll know where we're at for values, you'll know where we're at for property tax rate. So we'll have incorporated any feedback you've given us over the last two meetings into all of the funds. And we will show that to you on the 29th, and then we will produce this document. It won't be bound, it'll be in a notebook. We can give you all a copy of that if you want. We file it on the webs, it's put on the website, and it's filed with the city secretary. And in here, there is a summary of revenues and expenditures for all funds. Page 31. So that will show you.
In this book. Yeah, I'm just making a note because I didn't, I didn't bring the book.
Right, and it shows you all of the expenditures. Again, I think what you're asking is, a transfer is not a cash out-the-door. It's just moving money from one fund to another, and then.
Yeah, that's what I understand here. Jim, going back to your previous comment, I'm kind of making the assumption that the revenue side is not fixed because you're dependent on the property tax assessment. But the expenditure side, I'm assuming you would know more because we have had history over the past years. You know, we spent, let's say, 75 million last year, and this year, we plan to spend 75 plus or minus 2 or 3, whatever. So I'm assuming that we are closer to knowing what we want to spend. And I just wanted to get to that number so we can do anything.
Be careful.
Thank you.
And I think the other thing that you have to keep in mind is our special revenue funds. Revenues minus expenditures aren't necessarily gonna be a positive. Because a lot of our special revenue funds, we are spending fund balance purposely. Because you gather it up, and then you get a project, and it takes time over the years, right, to spend that? That's all we have.
So you're done?
We are done.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody have any last questions for Kim?
Thank you.
I need to bring a whiteboard so we can.
No, you're doing great.
I know.
You've been in her office, haven't you? You've seen all that.
I have two whiteboards. I like to, I'm a visual person.
All right. Any other closing comments before we go to item number 11? I have to ask this question because of the way things have kind of gone down for the last few years. Understanding that, you know, from a policy standpoint, you know, we, we've taken the direction, the objective is the 3.49%, you know, because of SB two and sales tax issue. So that's what we're going into this with as far as our guide for expenditures. You know, the capital projects, she's gone through them, she's identified with those capital projects. We have the ongoing maintenance, the ongoing projects that we do in the community. CRDC approved their budget for next year as far as, you know, inclusive of projects that are just like, they're posted. CRDC approved their budget for next year as far as, you know, inclusive of projects that are just like, they're posted right now for what's going on. So is there any particular project or something that y'all are interested in collectively or whatever that we have not taken into account yet? Taking into account that you gave us your twenty forty vision, you've given us, you know, through the retreat, different aspects or inputs. You know what's coming down the pike. So is there, is there anything about, forgetting for a moment the level of this to that, to this, to that, transfer to not transfer and all that kind of conversation? Is there anything that you all are, hey, have we given some consideration to doing that? If so, can we see what that would look like and what the impact would be on the budget? Right? So it's an open-ended question because I don't want to have us get into late, late, late in the game and then have something pop up and it's like, okay, you know? That's not the best place to be.
Me too, and then Ramesh.
Just for a discussion purpose, you know, when I look at these numbers on page four, we are going to increase the property evaluation point one point seven billion dollars, that sixteen percent increase. But we are still, I'm looking at from the citizens' perspective, we're still asking them to pay more taxes. You know, we showed the breakdown here today by ten dollars or whatever the number is. So how do we explain to the citizens, hey, we got this much increase in property valuation, but we are still spending more money and you have to pay more?
One, one explanation would cost us more to do business. Our electricity costs more, gas costs more, the everyday maintenance effect, you know, as far as concrete costs more. Things that we do cost us more as well. So again, if you, if you don't want us to do certain things, it's, it's pretty simple to come to you and say, these are less. We'll just do less of, not what we're doing now. We're not necessarily taking on more programs, we're not necessarily taking on more projects. The projects we, as far as ongoing projects, but as far as capital projects, that's part of the expenditure more. So you can go and look and say, well, this is what we're doing. We're purchasing these things, we're buying these things, we're doing these things. So you can go point to those things. Does that help you? Our expense, you know, I think her comment, you know, when you compare two thousand and nineteen to twenty twenty-five, and our overall expenses basically only increased by three percent. I would say that's a pretty good story to tell to the community.
Especially when you add interest rate or.
Inflation.
Inflation rate of seven percent one year, five percent another, and then four last year or something like that.
But I appreciate the question, you know, everyone sitting around this table generally is a taxpayer, right?
And I particularly appreciate the discussion on why, Jim, when you have a senior exemption, why your percentage actually goes up?
Yeah.
That is, it's completely contrary, but, you know, you get into it, it's like, oh, yeah, understand. Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, from my selfish standpoint, once we finalize the budget, you're outing about meeting residents and, and they might ask, why was this project not funded? So I would love to have a discussion on like the four or five projects that fell below the funding line and, and get an understanding of some of the reasons that we can share with the residents on why that did not go above the line.
Do you, do you have projects in mind?
I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that you.
I, I think the question is, from our perspective, is what is it that the council would like to see us do?
And Mike, I don't have the list of all the projects.
Well, no, but what projects, this was the conversation that we had the other day. Is there something that's not being done? That the citizens are telling you, hey, we'd like to see this done? Because the projects we're talking about, they're, they're not truly projects, they're pieces of equipment, right? They're, they're capital, they're a truck here or a backhoe there, right? So it's, your terminology or our terminology.
It's probably different.
It's, it's different.
Again, from the environment that I come in, we have all the asks recorded as a project. And some of them, we have the money to do, and some of them say, we don't have the money this year, we'll move it to next year. So.
Yeah, I'm trying to keep our focus on policy. And, you know, in terms of your expenditures and to your point about controlling your expenditures and everything along those lines. We've identified where the additional expenditures are going specifically. So if you, if you, if you want to see a list of things that aren't getting funded, they're not getting funded because we're presenting to you a balanced budget, and they're based on the priorities of the directors. This is the conversation that we have.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I still, I'm assuming there's a list somewhere. And if you're saying there's no list, I think you're right.
There is a list. I guess I'm challenging the idea of you, I want you at, you know, as a council, as an elected official, at policy level. If you're, if you're going to get into, and in particular, now this is where you and I may disagree. If you're, if you're going to get into whether I buy that mower or that trailer or that, because that's what's on the list. And if that, if, if that's a debate that you want this council to get into, I want to turn to the mayor and say, is that really what the conversation y'all want to be having?
No, if, if you're telling us the list has picked this more versus that more, it's definitely not the best use of this time.
So the, let's, let's step back. I'm going to give a hypothetical. Would you like to see more projects done next year?
You want me to answer the question? I want the highest priority projects done.
You're doing that.
And I will definitely take the word, but in terms of shedding light on transparency, is there a list of projects that we are talking?
And I've said to before, I'm happy to share the list with you. But Mike, and we can share the list, we have the Excel spreadsheet. We show where, you know, I'll call it above the line, below the line. I just want to make sure that you're spending, and I'm not making a judgment call on this, I'm giving you from my perspective. I want to make sure that you're concentrating on big issues, right, in terms of what's going on.
So where I was going to go with that was, if you want to see more projects done next year, we, we need to increase the budget.
That's not what, what I'm talking about, Mayor. I'm saying our, our budget is a budget. What projects we can do with, given the budget that we have, that is still the council's choice, is my assumption. If that's not right?
We don't get in and pick individual projects that are being done.
Okay. If, if that's the practice of the council, then, then I'm okay with that.
That's where we rely on our parks and rec board, our library board, our, the, the boards and commissions to come and present their work plans and then we adopt that as a budget. If you want to give the parks and rec board a bigger budget, you might assume that that's going to give you a pickleball court quicker, but I don't know that. It may not, it may, there may be something ahead of the pickleball court on their list. But I'm, I'm content to let that work through the system until it gets ready for funding. To, to your point, though, there is a list that each one of the boards and commissions and groups has that will be funded when it's available.
But Mike just said he's willing to share that list.
Yes, I, I'm just, my word of caution is, it is meaningless to you from a standpoint of, we have prioritized it from a departmental standpoint, collectively as an organization that got built into the budget with the input of CRDC, Parks and Rec Board, Library Board, Smart Board. All that goes into a balanced budget. My, my, my thing, I guess I would say to you is, to your particular question is, you set the target. The target was set at three point four nine nine. The revenues, right, in terms of what's going on. So that, that is my cap on my expenditures.
But we don't need to go up to three point four nine nine every year, right? We can be below that.
That, that is the council's direction under the, the perception of SB two and the sales tax. If you change that philosophy, that's fine.
So we, we made an, we have an agreement that we're going to spend three point four nine nine every year.
No, we had that conversation in January and at the retreat.
Well, the, the challenge is four people agree and then three people left out. And the only time is when the budget season comes, we got to approve the budget or not.
That's, I can't, that's, that's, that's how this works.
That's how government, our government works.
Exactly, yes.
But I, I think, I think what Mike is trying to say is that.
You already said you're willing to share the list, that's all I have.
But like philosophically, what he's trying to say is, he doesn't want us picking mowers like that. He wants us saying to the city, oh, we want, it, it, do we agree on, you know, two percent increase every year? Do we agree on, you know, like doing the three point four nine nine? Like, that's the low, and then everybody else does their job to figure out what we spend the money on. That's ultimately what, what I'm hearing. And we did give a direction to the city manager that this is our philosophy going forward, we did that in the unit. And you weren't on council.
To that point, we have put in, like, one of the chairs of the different boards that we have talked to me and said, hey, how come our projects are not ever being funded? And I, I fell back on my discussion with Mike and I said, hey, the city department heads get together and, and they decide what's the most important project that can be funded. And their, their impression was that the city council makes that decision. It looks like it's not, and I'm fine with that.
Oh, see, I would say to you at that time, turn around and say, what is it? I don't know what that project is that's not being funded. I know when the, if it's the Smart Board, I'm just going to use that because I know you have the connection to it. The Smart Board kind of gave the two, you know, the big, big project, right? And then it talked about how do we market us as a smart city? Okay, so we built in some funds for, for that. There's some other things in the portfolios that they have as far as some system issues. Those, those get done, right? But I don't, I, I can't speak to, that one's more kind of aspirational in some instances. If you remember that presentation, I think you were there. But if the CRDC and the Park Board say, here are the priorities, right? And then, then we, y'all, they voted on that. And then they plugged that in and that's where the budget, that's where some of this capital expenditure was identified over the next five years. The trails as an example, right? Some of the park amenities as an example. Some things have been done over at the core as an example. So those, those get fed into the budget based on the direction that we receive from the various boards. The, in this budget, you know, we continue to fund for the library, I think it's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for library book purchases, audio and, and other things, right? So the, you know, that's the feedback that we take that we build into the particular budget. So I don't want to belabor the point, I just, the, the question is to, and this, because it's happened in the past, it's, you know, on the, you know, when we get into the vote, well, what about if we did something like that? Yes, we can, I'm just going to, it takes a minute to say, okay, well then what, what, what's it going to replace? Because there's, so I guess that's what I would say to you, it's like, okay, if that's, let's say you look at the list and say, well, look, I really want to do that. Okay, based on what? Then we get into that whole KPI conversation.
Brianna?
Well, I think, kind of to add to all this, I mean, one of the reasons on the board we have our staff liaison is to help with that check and balance, to bring those items. I mean, one, we have the board come and, and report to us, right, what their priorities are. The staff is, I mean, Mike's constantly asking his, his team and his directors, like, where are the priorities? And how do they fit into council priorities that we provide during retreat? How does it fit into either twenty forty or how does it fit into what we designated as priorities, right? And then I think to Mike's point, I mean, what Kevin said as well is, you know, if there's something in particular that they're like, hey, we've been asking for this for years and it hasn't, then I think that's something that we need to know specifically. Has something fallen off the radar and making sure that that particular project comes back up to Mike and to the mayor and say, hey, there's a question about this one? But I'll give you an example, I know that for years, a skateboard park was on the Parks and Rec Board list for years. I don't even know if it's still on the list or not, but for years, right? That was on the list. And we kept dropping it to the bottom because we're like, that's not a priority for us. There's other issues, there's liabilities, that's not what we're hearing from the citizens that we need. So it's not to say that they're not coming up with great ideas, that particular project wasn't something that we were ready to fund or willing to fund and, and it didn't necessarily fit. And so, again, how do we prioritize what we absolutely need, whether it's streets or lights or, I mean, fire station or whatever it might be, right? Like thinking through some of these different projects. But I would say, if you're hearing that there's a particular project that has been on the list for a while and they don't feel like they're getting guidance or answers, then please let them know so that that can come up for discussion. Because maybe, maybe Mike can have staff give us an update on something in that particular, for that particular project.
And keep in mind that this all, and I, I hate to go back. But in January, we will re-review our prioritization for the city. And that is when those priorities get brought forth. So starting, well, it, it starts after the budget's adopt, adopted. But our initial, our main input will be in January. And that's, that really does guide both the staff and the, and consequently, the committees and boards and commissions from there on. Kevin?
Thank you. So these are the, a point that you brought up earlier about like, you said something about like, we don't have to use the three point four nine nine every year. And that's absolutely true, we have the three year, we have the, the three years to be able to, to go back and, and go do it, right? So maybe the policy, maybe we have a discussion next January about, maybe we adopt a policy of like, we try to look at, instead of every year, try maxing the three dot four nine nine, maybe we say, we're going to look at that on a two-year average and say like, well, could we drop it this year? But if we need it the next year, we could take advantage of that. Like, that would be a policy direction that, that we would want to give, you know, Mike and staff. And I, and to Mayor's point, that's exactly the type of discussion that we would have in January. But if we give them that policy, then they can go back and go out and build the budget based off of that and, and say, we could use it, I mean.
Can I give you a low blow now?
I mean, go for it, I mean, but I mean, that's a policy example.
It is, but, and I, I'm sorry to blow this, but you don't make the fifth best place to live in the country by cutting your budget down. I mean, I, I'm very proud of the fact that we unbeknownst anybody here rated number five in the country and number, well, we were number two in the state.
You all are proud of that.
Well, and you should.
We all are proud of it.
And you should be. And so, you know, I think we're here where we are today because of, of decisions that we've made in the past. And, and this council has traditionally made very good, fiscally prudent, sound decisions. So this discussion is, is part of that, so thank you very much for your inputs. It's, it's very much what we are here to do. We're here to debate, we're here to make the, the high-end discussions and decisions on that. And I look, like I said in the email, I look forward to continuing that with you guys. So anyway, anybody have anything else? Well, let's move on then. And by the way, really appreciate the discussion. You know, we don't get better without debate and compromise and changing direction for the best, and that's what we're here for. Okay, item number eleven is our citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak on any item, must register in list or address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each and an individual speaker's time may be extended by an additional two minutes with the agreement of the majority of the council members present. Person signed up to speak will be called in, oh.
Person's key.
You know, I can't do two things at once, so. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks, but any speakers will be made against the, any member of the council, mayor, individual or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the Texas Open Meetings Act. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the Texas Open Meetings Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will cut in and ask the council for an extension, and that will be at the discretion of the council. We have... I believe we have two people that have signed up, Mr. Shaw.
Hopefully I can keep it under two minutes. I don't have a prepared statement, I just have a couple of comments, and in light of tonight's discussion, I think they're appropriate. So this is just some observations and...
Name, name an address, please, sir.
Dave Shaw, 215 West Wing Drive. Just some observations based on things that are going around, around the budget. Well, I first off say I, you know, Tim and her staff and the whole staff does a great job managing the money and all that. But there's a couple of things that somehow don't always hit me quite right. Like, the last budget meeting, we, it was proposed that we, we agreed as a city to fund half of the SRO for the school district. And it was immediately approved by the council to go forward with this, to pay the whole amount for this coming year through the CIST, which is fine, we need that program, we need the SROs, I have no problem with that. But that's a whole different area with a whole different budget. And like in the discussions here today, things go in right buckets, things don't get spread around. I didn't see a whole lot of discussion with it. And here we are, taking all this money, which, there's a letter being given to Brad Hunt tonight to release debt of $580,000, which I assume a large part, if not all of that, was from you releasing to agree to pay for the other half of the SRO program. I paid three times as much property taxes for the school district as I do to run the whole city. And I think their budget's a mess right now because of their changing demographics and everything. And it seems that that should have had a little more discussion rather than just give it to them. Not opposed to the amount, not opposed to doing it, but those things get done kind of on the spur of the moment sometimes, and I'm just bringing that to your attention. Another example of that is the Veterans Memorial. A couple of years ago, you had a budget for around $350,000 to do a Veterans Memorial, great. All of a sudden, you know, things got a little bogged down and prices went up, and then all of a sudden in a work session, we're up to a million and a half dollars. Where did this money come from? That's my question. Where's the money coming from that was going to go, not go to the school district? Where are you getting that now? And then you move budgets around and people have questions, it's not really transparent. I'm not saying that you don't need the money and that you shouldn't do it, but those things, you know, raise questions.
I'm just tired.
Can I have a little bit more? I don't have much more. And of course, you know about my stormwater issue, because again, this is another moving the bucket around because the state mandated your three-and-a-half percent of property tax and all that. So you had to get money to do something with the stormwater, so over a five-year period, you slowly boiled the fog so that we didn't notice it, and all of a sudden we get $60 a year extra in water fees for a non-utility that the state allows you to call a utility. I'm sorry, rainfall is not a utility, and it's an inequitable tax because people living in small houses are paying the same as people living in acre lots. It's just not right that it should be that way, it should be a property tax infrastructure issue. And finally, on a humorous note, just to lighten the mood a little bit, the mayor made a comment at the last budget meeting about considering raising the prices for non-residents of Capel for Rolling Oak Cemetery buying plots, right? Well, I just want to point out to everybody, so you're fully aware of it, that nobody living in Capel has ever been buried in that cemetery.
Choice of words, choice of words.
Well, I do have a girl who's going to need some city staff answer before I get started. But am I to take it from...
Jeff, name an address, please.
Jeff Barnell, 1601 East Sandy Lake Road. Am I to take it from this discussion that the city is self-funded on all of our property investments?
Well, we can't respond to a question directly, but you can certainly pose your question and someone will get back to you.
Why do we not have a claim for the roof, for the insurance on the, on the library? If it's $1.2 million, that's... Bijou, great point. I've never come to a citizen and talked that one of it, to raise the city budget and grow. I appreciate the fact that we are the fifth most desirable, but you are going to have a tough answer when people come to you and say, property values have gone up in maintaining that tax rate. I can tell you that I've never spoken to a business or a residential resident here in Capel that has asked for more coke than once, obviously. So that would be one thing I think to suggest to you, that you did need to grow, you're invited. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate both of your, your comments and time tonight. Council, just as a reminder, we do have a council meeting tomorrow night. The previously scheduled portrait is not going to be taken because we will be missing one person. I guess we should go ahead and do it if that person was...
No, it's me, well, it's potentially me.
Oh, no, it's...
Not even you. I know when you said that, I was like...
Well, if everybody had been here, it would have happened. Anyway, we will, we will take care of that later.
Enjoy that shade he just threw on me there.
Jim, like, I might be going too.
Yeah, I'm picking a jury tomorrow, so I may or may not be late.
Well, it would be early anyway, so you probably wouldn't be there. All right, so anyway, just no photo tomorrow night. So there being, there being no further business before this group, we are adjourned at 8:37.